This meeting of the Fergus Falls Port Authority to order. Today is the 18th of October, 2021. Thank you all for joining us because you knew it was going to be a riveting meeting. I appreciate that. Uh, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from September 20th, 2021. Does anyone have any, uh, any Port Authority members, I should say, have any, uh, comments, feedback, anything? Or would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Yeah.
So, Caroline and Steve, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Alright, meeting minutes are approved, thank you. And now, it's time for the final review of the purchase agreement between the Fergus Falls Port Authority and Vector Windows Inc. Clara?
Yes. So, you all should have gotten a copy of the, um, final purchase agreement via email. Does anyone have any outstanding questions on it? It's fairly straightforward, it's similar to other purchase agreements the port has done recently. Um, essentially, it lays out the overall cost of what's being offered for the land, which is 135, and it discusses the fact that the Port Authority will be taking on the cost of a Phase 1 environmental assessment, which will be performed by a company of Vector Windows choosing. Um, I'm not sure where they are with that process, so I'm not sure when we should expect a bill for that, but, um, that is something we had discussed and we were okay with moving ahead with. Um, they also had soil borers done, and that geotechnical report was included in your packet as well. So, does anyone have any questions about the sale, the mechanism of the sale, purchase agreement?
So Clara, just pointing out, from the 135,000 of proceeds, using those to pay off the assessments to those various bond funds is correct, right?
Yep, that's correct.
Alright, any questions at all, comments, anything? Alright, so, do we, uh, have a motion to approve the purchase agreement?
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Brent with the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh wait, Rolf is pointing.
Okay.
Okay, you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? That is approved. Thank you.
Yeah, so we do have to do the public hearing, I probably laid that out incorrectly. It was the final review, and then we have to do the public hearing, and then we can approve the sale.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and strike that last thing, because it didn't happen. Uh, and I will now, at this time, open up the eagerly anticipated public hearing for the proposed sale of real property to Vector Windows Inc., Vector Windows Inc., by the Fergus Falls Port Authority, as required by Minnesota State Statute 469.065 subdivision 2. Public hearing is now open. If you wish to speak, please approach the podium, state your name, address. Uh, I see no one approaching the podium.
Don't see a podium. Oh.
Okay, it's kind of in your peripheral vision. At this time, we will close the public hearing. And now, do we have a motion to approve the purchase agreement?
I suppose so, yes.
Okay, Anthony, thank you. Brent, again with the second. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? That passes. And now, we will vote on the sale of real property to Vector Windows Inc.
I think you just did that, Your Honor.
Oh, that's what that was? Okay. I don't know. Uh, I'm new at this. Okay, well, that's done. Um, unless anyone has any further business for the Port Authority?
I'll just note, this is the last of the Progress Drive lots, so we have officially sold all of those, which is really exciting. Good work.
Yeah, good job today. Okay, uh, well, with that, then we will adjourn to our work session.
Okay, we'll shift mindsets. Wait. Oops.
Okay.
Are you not moving seats?
I don't know. The mayor has graciously offered me his seat, unless...
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll get this.
So, welcome to the joint work session between the Fergus Falls Port Authority and the Fergus Falls City Council. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. Um, it was mentioned at a few of our last Port Authority, City Council, et cetera meetings that it's probably high time that we start thinking about the development of an economic development policy for the city of Fergus Falls. So, we are starting that process tonight. Um, it's going to likely be a longer process than, um, you would assume, but I think there's gonna be a lot of talking and back and forth that needs to go into it, and also a lot of research. So, this is round one of question mark number of rounds. So, we're talking tonight simply about prioritization. So, we've got three outcomes for today's meeting. Um, first, I'm gonna put the economic development policy into some context, both historical for the city, and then just overall what the role of an economic development policy is for municipalities. Um, we're gonna dive a little bit into the survey results that we got back from the surveys that I think most of you completed. Um, and then we're just gonna lay out a few next steps. We don't have any dates set, but we at least have some work items that we can dive into once we're done here. So, outcome one, context. Why does the city need an economic development policy? Well, the times are changing. The community is growing and changing, and we need something that we can all agree on as a base point for our growth. So, that comes down to an economic development policy, which includes things like a business subsidy policy, our TIF programs, all of those things wrapped up into one overarching goal and vision for what development looks like. So historically, um, oh, sorry. First, we'll talk about, this is from the Government Finance Officials Association. They have some really good information on economic development policies, in case you're interested, but jurisdictions should create a policy on the appropriate parameters for use of economic development incentives. Policies that guide the use of publicly funded incentives help ensure that incentives are applied consistently with principles and practices designed to mitigate risks. So inherently, when we're looking at, um, either subsidizing business or, uh, looking forward to an economic development project, like maybe putting in a road, there's inherently gonna be some risk in that. Um, and as a municipality, we do need to be careful with how we are spending taxpayer dollars. So that's why we come up with something like an economic development policy, it just lays out the groundwork so that we can say, we're not making decisions lightly or without any kind of context, we're making them based on our goals, and these are how we are going to reach our goals. So in the past, um, we found records, and some people here probably remember, in 2009, there was an overall economic development plan that Gordon Hadukova had put together. Um, it was, you have a copy of it on your desks in front of you. Essentially, it was kind of like a, a capital improvements plan, more than anything, um, and it was put together in order to be used in West Central Initiative, SEDs, their comprehensive economic development, um, plan that they put together in 2009, they go through and do that every, I think, three to five years. So we're already beyond the iteration that would have included that. Um, so if you wanna just take a second and look at what that was, that's kind of what, that's all we've really had, as far as I know. If anyone is aware of any other policies that have existed, please speak now or forever hold your peace.
And I think you're absolutely right, I think this was like coming from a capital improvement plan, so it wasn't policy, so I think you're spot on with that.
So that's 2009. In 2017, there was a, an amendment made to a business subsidy policy. Um, I'm not sure if the policy existed prior to 2017, I think it might have existed in some form, but under Amy Baldwin, there were updates made, and it, um, it basically follows state statute of what subsidies are allowed for, for businesses. And you do also have a copy of that plan, and that's essentially what we've been using since 2017. Um, I have records on my computer that do show that, uh, some updates were debated in 2019, I don't know if they ever made it to council or not, so there are some updates that exist, they're, they're kind of small things that, you know, update the statute numbers and things like that, but, um, there are some edits that exist if we wanna pull that back out at some point and look at them, but otherwise, 2017 is the last time that that was passed. And now, looking ahead to the future, we have $75,000 budgeted for a comprehensive plan, and this is going to be part of that comprehensive plan. And to give us a little bit more information about comprehensive plans is our planner, Karen Flom.
Uh, I'm, I'm here for one slide, so if everyone's good, I'll just, uh, talk from the desk here. Um, so I just, uh, put this little, uh, inverted triangle, uh, together here real quick, and I just wanted to talk for a few minutes, uh, just about what all these things are and how they relate to each other. Uh, so a comprehensive plan on the bottom there, uh, so it, it provides, its goal is to provide a roadmap for future actions or, or policies that will identify and, and shape a community vision. And so it achieves this by being both general and the fact that it has this overarching vision, um, but it also looks at many different facets of a community, uh, sometimes they're called elements, so things like housing, transportation, economic development is also another very common component to a comprehensive plan. Uh, and a comprehensive plan, depending on your goals and where you are as a community, they do tend to be longer term, tend to be about anywhere from 20 to 40 years. Uh, they, these elements, they, they do a deep dive, um, so they, they all work together, they look at the interactions between things like housing and transportation and economic development, um, but it also goes into, um, kind of a little bit of the, the nitty gritty as well. Um, so it's kind of one of those things that's both general and specific at the same time. Uh, sort of in the middle there is an economic development strategy or plan. Uh, and so this is ideally, um, in conjunction with or in addition to a comprehensive plan. They can take a lot of different forms, uh, they can be usually shorter time spans, uh, so it might be something that's a five-year time span or a 10-year time span, it might be a little bit more specific than a comprehensive plan, it might look at a specific neighborhood or, or a business corridor, a sector of the economy, uh, there's a wide range of things. Um, but so essentially, you know, it talks, builds off of the comprehensive plan, but it's something that's just a little bit more specific than what you would see in a comprehensive plan. It also doesn't necessarily have to be something that's really formal or even prepared by another party, it could be something as simple as an annual work plan, um, or even a longer-term work plan for something like a port authority, um, is also another example of an economic development strategy or plan. And finally, at the top there, uh, you get sort of your policy documents, so something like a, a TIF policy or a business subsidy policy, and so this is when you're actually evaluating specific projects or applications that you have in front of you, or how to make public investments. So, uh, again, it's sort of building off of all of this work, but it's, it's kind of the most specific thing. So how this relates to what we're doing today, uh, is that it's gonna lay a lot of that framework, I think, for the comprehensive plan. Um, so as, as elected and appointed officials, uh, you know, you have your priorities, and with the public engagement that comes with a comprehensive plan, that's a great way to either revalidate those priorities throughout the community, um, or also get new ideas or, uh, priorities through community engagement. Uh, and comprehensive plans also have an implementation element, uh, most typically, uh, so it talks about a timeframe for specific goals, puts measures on some of those goals, uh, and even though we might not get into that specific conversation today, that's likely going to be part of these next steps. Um, so that's just sort of what I had for, uh, sort of our, our little pyramid here. Um, I'm not sure if we were doing questions at the end, or if anyone...
Yeah, actually, this is a good time to pause and just say, does anybody have any questions about, um, the past policies that the city has had, or about the future comprehensive plan, or, um, about anything we've talked about so far? Yeah, Rebecca?
So I think what you've just laid out for us indicates that we've, have we ever had a comprehensive plan?
No.
Okay.
Good question, though, thank you. The 2017 document, though, has some value. Yep, yeah, and we do still use that, yes. Yeah.
And so much of that comes directly out of statute, so I know when Amy built that, because after she left, then I kind of stepped into some of those roles, so I had to educate myself, so reading statutes, looking at that, you could see they're very mirror each other, which is great, so...
Right. And I think what the port comes back to a lot is, um, you know, will this, um, create a tax base? And it says that that can be a consideration, but shouldn't be the sole consideration if you're considering subsidy, so I think that's something of note, too. There's many other, um, criteria that you could be looking at when you're prioritizing or making decisions about projects. And I guess, how many people knew that we had a business subsidy policy? Bill knew, Ari knew, Andrew knew, Stephanie knew. So maybe that's something that we need to, to do a better job of communicating, is we have this document, and maybe it should be a little bit more of a living document, I know it, it, it does mirror statute, but there are bits and pieces that do show the priorities of the city, and so if this is, um, if economic, an economic development plan is, is what we're working toward, then we should probably have, um, aspects of that mirrored in our business subsidy policy, so that should probably be something we bring out once a year. Yeah.
And then Karen mentioned that there's $75,000 budgeted for a comprehensive plan? Is that to hire somebody to, to work with us, or is that for...
So the way that we've approached it is that it would be both, it's, it's sort of a mixture of in-house, um, as an opportunity for me as a new staff member, um, you know, to be able to get out there, as well as having a consultant, um, to do some of the lifting and, and sort of be more of that partnership.
And the city has so many other plans that are already in existence, like the Downtown Riverfront Master Plan, things like that, so we, the way that we're kind of picturing it is that a consultant can come in and, and help us tie all of those plans together into our comprehensive plan. So, we haven't wasted any time or energy on these other plans, they're all gonna come together and give us a better final product. Okay, anything else?
I have one question on the, the comp plan, so you go through that process, is it every five years, every seven years, every 10 years, you pull it out and dust it off to see what you need to... Or what's the, I mean, I know you admit the comp plan's a 20 to 40-year broad, but is, is more of the economic development, wouldn't pull it more often, not so much the comp plan or how to...
Definitely, um, with a comprehensive plan, um, usually about halfway mark, you're, you're evaluating, um, whether or not that's a, a formal amendment or an update, or just something that's maybe a little bit more, um, you know, with elected officials, appointed officials, and some community engagement. Um, whereas if you, you know, kind of have a standalone economic development plan, um, you're probably looking at a much shorter term for that, at about five years, 10 years, um, just because of the changes that tend to happen in that timeframe.
Really good question. So, on to our next segment, uh, this is gonna stem directly from those surveys that won out. Um, so we sent out surveys to members of the City Council, the Port Authority, um, the Greater Fergus Falls Board, the Business Development for Fergus Falls Board, and then we also did send out a separate link with the same survey to, um, department heads, so we could pull that information out and look at that separately if we wanted to. Um, so we got 19 responses overall, which is, I think, pretty good for the group that we've got here. Um, and we discovered that there was a very large overarching theme, um, spread throughout most people's responses, which was growth. So respondents believed that, um, economic development results in growth, but the kinds of growth that were referenced were kind of all across the board, there was, um, references to growth in population, to growth in businesses, to growth in businesses coming in from outside the community, to growth in the tax base, to growth in tax numbers. So, lots of ideas that were pointing to the same direction, which is growing, but how we got to that point was very varied. Um, respondents also hoped that in 20 years, the population of Fergus Falls would grow, and that Fergus Falls would be a place for families to live, work, and play. That was mentioned in several responses, I think that's a nice little catchphrase. We should consider, um, maybe moving away from it someday, just I feel like it's a little trite, but that's just a personal opinion, we'll get, we'll talk about that some other time. Um, respondents also noted that they got involved in government a lot of times in order to help grow the community and also to engage in progress. So those were really nice answers to see, I think everybody is at the table for the right reasons. Um, and respondents also recognized a lot of the same economic assets, uh, the river was mentioned a lot, our arts community was mentioned a lot, um, the natural resources surrounding Fergus Falls, uh, and some other cultural assets. Um, respondents were varied again on how they view the local manufacturing climate in particular, that answer popped up several different times, that either, uh, manufacturing was strong and it was a really big asset to our community, or that they felt that our manufacturing needs to grow more and that that was an opportunity for growth. So, little bit disparate in those responses, and, um, not sure why, maybe there are some different viewpoints out there, but it probably just comes down to how you're looking at things. Um, respondents also, uh, the responses regarding effective business subsidies were also very varied. Uh, it essentially came down to most people's understanding of a business incentive being either like a cash influx to a business, or infrastructure in order to entice new business. So, a little bit different in how those two, two things would work, um, but overall, I think a, a fairly good idea of what is available as a business subsidy, so that's, that's good, that's a jumping off point that we can, we can learn from. Karen, do you have any further thoughts about the survey, since you also went over all of the results?
No, I, I think that was a, a great overview.
So, this kind of leads us to our big question for the day, um, when we were going through the results of the survey, when we were seeing all of these different answers, and seeing how across the board they could be in different ways, we're wondering, okay, maybe our real question here is, what is growth? Like, how do we get to a point where we can say to each other, we want Fergus Falls to grow, and we all know what we mean when we say that? So, um, that's what we're going to work toward, is determining what growth means to all of us. So what we did, um, was pull the responses and come up with seven different, we're gonna call them buckets, seven, seven different buckets that, um, explain what growth is to, to the respondents. So, we've got an increase in the number of new businesses formed, not relocations, increase in the number of employees, reduction in number or percent of business closures, example, increasing the business success and sustainability, um, increase in the number of businesses, improved diversity in the economy, which could mean a lot of different things, so kind of take that as you will, but it could mean more diversity in the types of business and industries, more diversity between part-time and full-time jobs, the, the offering of benefits, et cetera, um, or diversity in and amongst business owners. Um, increase in workforce living and working in Fergus Falls, so that goes kind of along with the population growth, but it would also lead directly to, obviously, a growth in our workforce. Um, and an increase in taxes collected, sales income or property. So, these are the ideas that we are working with. Does anybody have any questions about those ideas, or is anybody not seeing something that they might think should be listed?
I've got a kind of a question slash whatever, and it kind of relates to this, but, like, um, I mean, we hear this, you know, like the chamber will say that, you know, in the last five years, we've had 158 new businesses in town, but we never kind of look at, you know, of that 158 businesses, how many are still operating today? And then, actually, try to look at like, just for sake of a number, say 20 of them don't exist today. We never then look at the 20 and say, well, why, why did that 20 go away? Um, and I kind of think as much as, you know, we, we kind of like to say, well, this, it seems like, when, when somebody says like, there's 170 new businesses, I don't physically feel that, and I think a lot of people don't. Um, and I think what we, we do a poor job of then looking at like, where did they go? And why did they go? And, and is that an area where we should be looking at to say, well, how do we make sure they don't go, or that they don't fail? Um, you know, because, you know, when you walk down the high street, obviously, there's a constant turnover to a certain extent, and, you know, and it's kind of like, you know, I mean, the number of people that say like about Bella Caccina's, I mean, that was a successful restaurant, and, and obviously, it closed from a, for a health reason of the, of the, you know, the owner, but it's never been emulated, you know, but it was, but everybody, everybody you speak to says, like, you know, Wes Bella's coming, get Bella's back. And, and I think that's where we don't, we don't help, or we don't, maybe we don't look at the, the successes and then try to kind of go back and figure out, you know, any ones that failed, and then, you know, try to work on, how do we replace the ones that were successful that kind of, you know, aren't here anymore?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and a lot of what you're getting to is, um, also benchmarking, which is definitely something that's gonna be part of further discussion, because you're right, it's hard to do that follow-up. Um, so it sounds to me like you're going to be putting a lot of your dollars into the reduction in number slash percent of business closures.
But, but I don't know that number.
Right, no.
I mean, you know, I don't know what that number is, I don't even know how many businesses there are in Fergus. You know, so when somebody says there's 170 new businesses, what if there's only actually 100 businesses in Fergus? You know, that's not an impact. And, and then I think sometimes when we say a, a new business, and it's a sort of a one-person consultancy type thing, is that, I think that's also the other thing, is, is that, what's the definition of a business? You know, a, a pop-up bakery, is that a business, or is that a, an added employee? You know, I mean, because, you know, I can add an employee or half an employee, um, you know, quite easily, to a certain extent, but that doesn't get measured either. So, I think we also have to look at what's the definition of a business. Just because a chamber gives a dollar to somebody, it's not necessarily a kind of a business.
Yeah, that's a, that's an interesting point. Um, does anybody else wanna say anything about, yeah, go ahead?
Yeah, well, that's a really great point, and Lisa and I were talking about that, 170, whatever.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it was like, I can't remember, it's 158 or 170 or something like that.
And, and so Greater Fergus Falls has been tracking businesses, obviously not defined, but we've started, based on the services that we provide to those businesses, we also do track, um, businesses that have closed since we started, and what those reasons are, and how, you know, we can prevent that from happening in the future, or replicate that business, exactly what you're talking about. Like, Able Farmer is one of those, like, obviously, that's a very new closure, so we're working with them to hopefully be able to replicate that again with someone new, and how can we best support them? So that's where a lot of our programming comes from, is based on those types of, um, surveying among, uh, among the business community. I don't have the number of, of closed businesses, that is something that we mentioned we, we would really like to start working on, and through that, um, West Central's new SEDs that was just approved this year, one of the, that is one of the goals in their, uh, business development, uh, priority, is to establish a, a community or, you know, region-wide, but break it up by community, a, a business profile, how many businesses are here, how many have closed, those types of things. So, I, I think that work has begun, we did just meet about that last week, so if anybody is interested, they're out there looking for more people to contribute to that conversation, and the next meeting is in November, specifically for that topic, so...
What is their timeline for the SEDs? Are they hoping by the end of the year?
Well, it's operational as of '22.
Right. It's been approved.
Okay.
I actually have copies in my car if anyone wants one.
So what's being built right now is the, is the new one, or...
It's the next five years, starting with this year.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
I mean, historically, you know, folks have tracked jobs, so that's another way to kind of qualify that.
But, but jobs can be, you know, I, you know, Autotel Power adds 20 jobs, nobody necessarily...
Nobody necessarily, obviously community-wise, will know that, but that, an autotail power didn't go away as a business, but if another business kind of closed then, and took 20 jobs, then it's kind of the same.
Right, but if our programs created the jobs through the track jobs, that's one of the focuses.
And, and that's what we do. We try to track jobs, part-time, full-time numbers, but also sales tax too, what's contributing to sales tax. So yes, a pop-up may not necessarily create five full-time jobs, but is it contributing to sales tax? It's still providing a service, a benefit to the community, so I guess.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not knocking it, by the way, I mean, so I'm just sort of saying that like, obviously.
Right. But maybe there's a way that we can further define that, so when we are promoting the number of new businesses, jobs created, we can clearly articulate the difference.
Yeah. And I, and I think in a way that's, I think that's kind of one of the comments when people hear 170 jobs, 170 new businesses, they kind of, you know, and maybe obviously like everybody, they're a little bit blinkered, but they look around, so where are they? You know, I didn't see them.
Yeah.
And on that note too, is it, is it considered a job if they're, if they have a physical location? You know, are they permanently feeling or leasing or purchasing a property? Are they filling a vacancy downtown or elsewhere in the community? Is that what matters? You know, when it's visible to the community, that's when they see, oh, there is an impact, right? So I think those are the things that we have to look at.
I think you guys are drilling down into a really good topic for either some research or another discussion, but this is, I like where this is going. Everybody's brains are working the right way, so thank you. We can pop back to this slide if we need to, but I'm just gonna explain the activity that we're gonna do really fast.
Can I jump in real quick?
Yeah, okay.
Would, childcare is always an issue, and I know it's not one of our, necessarily our main focuses, but it's always an issue, especially with workforce. Would that fit in any of those buckets?
Let's take a look.
There. Like, I mean, do, again with kind of what Anthony and Ty were talking about, one person in-home daycare is trackable, that kind of stuff.
It could go under a workforce living and working in Fergus Falls.
We could expand, yeah, we could expand.
Is there a metric for that? Are we collecting that, or?
Right.
Tracking it in relation to other metrics?
Because years ago, we had numbers of how many spaces we didn't have, right?
I think childcare aware is still tracking.
Still tracking that.
Yeah.
Children's first finance, their last report was in 2020. I think they are waiting for updated census data, and they will do another report, but it is, that's the one that is pointing out the openings, like the number that, yeah, the gap, rather than the number of, well, although they do include the number of served. So, those metrics are out there, but do we have a spot for that in our buckets as they sit right now? So, Karen, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that we might have talked a little bit too about, this is sort of the end result in the priority. And so, the question after this is going into the community, going into the businesses and stakeholders, and saying, what do you need to actually do this? And that that's likely when some of those conversations and things would come up, such as, you know, more housing, more childcare, just as examples.
Yeah. Do you have one question?
Uh huh.
In the, in the bucket that is increasing new businesses formed and not relocations, can you clarify on that? Is that relocating, like, an existing business in Fergus Falls relocating, or if we're bringing in a business from the metro that's relocating here, that should be, I mean, that's an impact?
Karen explained it really well earlier today, so I'm gonna make her do it here.
Yeah. This was a, I called it my beautiful mind board. So, the increase in the number of new businesses that are not relocations, so those are new firm formations. So, a business that does not exist anywhere, whether in Fergus Falls or anywhere, whereas increase in the number of businesses just by itself, that could be someone moving in from outside of Fergus Falls, or, you know, moving throughout, throughout the community.
These are really good questions, and I am taking notes for future sessions, so. Okay, so we're gonna. That's right, thank you. So, okay, we're, we are gonna stick with the buckets the way that they are currently, but do keep in mind how you can fit in some of these larger questions about workforce and about supporting childcare, because they are gonna play into the conversation as we go. So, you all have a stack of cash on your desk, unless you're Andrew or Bill, or...
Bill already spent.
No money for you.
Unless you're Sis Tab or Greater Fergus Falls members, just for the port and the council. So, you have $1,000 in your packet of money, and what you are gonna do is you are gonna get up and you are gonna go over to the buckets that we have sitting under the window over there, and you are going to prioritize how you spend that $1,000. So, in essence, this, this is gonna get us down into what a standard definition of growth is, and then also help to reveal some of the shared priorities that we have around economic development. So, you can, you can spread your money out in whatever denomination that you'd like. If you have one bucket that you think is just like super important, you can put all of it in there, you can spread it out however you want. We're gonna give you a few minutes to do this, and then we're probably gonna do a couple rounds of this, just to help narrow it down, because we are starting with seven and we want to get it down to more like three. So, any questions on the activity? Tom is ready.
So there are seven buckets.
There are seven buckets in one spot.
Right there.
Yep, and they have all the names on there. If you have questions about what any of the titles mean, we can go back and talk about that, you can ask Karen or me individually, doesn't matter, but any other?
Can you put that back up?
Yeah, I can put that back up.
Yeah.
There you go. So take a few minutes to think about it before, I mean, Tom, if you're ready to go, by all means.
I just didn't want to make a trip all the way over there to back.
Okay.
So, if, for instance, increase the number of employees, or we're talking about workforce, I know that we're finding that childcare plays a big role in that topic, but it's not defined by us here. Can I write that on the back of my thing?
Write it in a note to yourself.
I already have. You won't know that.
No, but we, yes, but we do know that that is part of it, yes. Good question. Other questions? Okay, I'm gonna, oh, Scott, go ahead.
Other increase in taxes collected, sales income, and property. I think that our residents wouldn't necessarily complain about an increase in sales tax as it goes to funding things like the library or watermark, things that do have the sales tax related things, but they're not gonna be very happy about increases in income of property taxes. So we could say, yes, we're glad to see our sales taxes increase, while still saying, no, we don't want our other taxes to increase. And that's kind of a dilemma for that bucket.
Well, and I see that bucket a little bit differently, and was considering putting all my money in there, because you can't really, I feel like that's sort of the.
You can't grow without money.
That is the goal of kind of all of those is, you have more sales tax from businesses, employees, property.
We're seeing this two different ways, so I'm just gonna clarify. What we're seeing is an increase in the taxes that are collected, not the increase, like, we're not saying, we're not levying more taxes. We're seeing, we're seeing businesses grow, and people move to town, and properties be built or purchased, and that's where we're seeing the increase in the taxes.
So there's more of the, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, it'd be quite the opposite then, so you would be baking the pie bigger, as you increase your tax base, so everybody would be paying less.
So there's, that's to have more taxes, more amenities, for more wellbeing.
Is there a way that we can pull out, on the sales taxes, because obviously this, the sales taxes for online, obviously go greater than kind of Fergus city limit as such, because anybody with a 56537 zip code, which kind of goes out, out of like the physical barrier of the city, they pay obviously online kind of sales tax, but also of the sales tax, is there a way that we can identify how much is from online sales as opposed to how much is from physical sales in, in, in the community?
Something, that's something we could research. We have a contact at the Department of Revenue. I don't know how much we can drill, but we can check.
I mean, it'd just be interesting to know, because we, we keep saying obviously sales tax is increasing, but is it increasing from a brick and mortar, you know, an employee physically based in Fergus, or is it that more and more people are buying online?
Right.
Which is, because the strategy would be different as to how you approach trying to make it work.
Karen.
Yeah, because if more and more are buying online.
Can you hear the answers, there a way we can?
We don't, we have, we get a bucket for the true.
It's good to clarify.
What are you doing? You know, I think I should say something similar, you know, that diversity, to me that's all, making sure the, who's left out, whether it's child, whether they don't have skills, you know, like, I think, I should have spoken up.
Well, and we're also finding that people are aging out of it. I think I'll be telling you, right?
And drive in, I think.
They're not growing as fast.
Yeah.
He's in like Denver now, isn't he?
Geez. Wow, just like, fly right up.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. She's, she had my, or my two-year-old, her two-year-old grand.
So is the resort like beautiful, right?
He's very hard and he's got a very easy personality.
The wind took a lot of the trees there.
Oh, leaves out the trees, sure. I know.
It is lovely.
Is it kind of?
Yeah, we had a springboard for the arts.
Oh, that, that, yeah, I saw the post, I didn't know that's where they were.
They were elegant.
They were like 15 people there, yeah.
Yeah, they had the whole place and.
Yeah, what a nice thing. And in the post, Michelle said.
I was gonna say, so, I was gonna ask, like, mine's okay, but what does that mean?
You know, really great, nice. Do you guys hate or do you think that's how they do that?
We usually have a blast.
Oh, yeah, 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 just down the road.
Yes, and Sarah, who is the owner, so she came over every day.
Right.
Amazing.
She made them on site?
Yeah, because we have like a, she says how she can do it right now.
Right, right. Oh, I love that. I have, I did last summer, I have to get back there this summer, but they had just, you know, it was during the pandemic, but we sat at a picnic table outside and had appetites, it was really good.
It's just the Terry Trickle.
Who used to be our admiral, our empire.
Oh, I didn't know that, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we know Terry, she's.
Isn't she a partner in the?
Yeah, she's a co-owner.
Co-owner? Oh, but you're, Sarah is the chef.
Sarah's the chef. Terry will do like desserts.
Okay. Gotta be almost 30 hours. I should see if, well, they're probably, they probably have just hours, but they're probably still open.
It's Thursday through Saturday or Sunday, it's like an afternoon.
Pretty soon they'll just go to being inside. And they have very small, but it's super.
Maybe I just thought it was hard to spend, just wanted to go through and start on the kids.
I'm glad that they, that they energize that way.
As it was, it was pretty bad.
I was there when it was like.
It just went downhill, like, we were always busy. It was ridiculous. It was difficult, so they were like, no. Right? It wasn't like, I'm so, you know, it was just like.
Yeah. There's this awesome place down in St. Joseph's.
I went to school there.
Yeah, it's supposed to be awesome, but they're kind of like that. You have to make a reservation in order to eat there, and the waiting list, and I mean, it's really hard to get in, and you can't get K R E W P.
So you went to St. Joseph's. Yeah, Taco Bell, St. Joe, it's like a different town. Really kind of classy, you know?
They, they have kind of classy, they don't, it's used to just be.
It's kind of a dump, like, I know, I loved it, but.
Downtown is just ordered a.
Right, it's a little, yeah, now it's.
I'm sure. They have their, they have their.
Thank you, Vera.
Very safe. And St. John's, like West Downs, or Night Market. Whatever, they have like a guest house at St. John's. I think again. I want more than $1,000.
So you stayed at, Tom, you have?
Yeah, they have a guest house.
Yeah, how was that?
It was awesome. It's just plain and simple, but all people got off the plane, and it's a bed, a shower, and it's provided.
People basically keep hearing this like, bro, bro, bro.
I've stayed there a couple of times, and it's like a $70.
All right, we are gonna do at least one more round. So we, we pulled out improved diversity in the economy, reduction in business closures, and increase in the number of new businesses formed, not relocations, which leaves us with increase in the number of businesses, increase in taxes collected, increase in the number of employees, and increase in workforce living and working in Fergus Falls. So you have 10, 100, you've got the same amount again, and you're gonna, whatever it was. You're gonna come up here and you're gonna do the same thing again, but with just these four buckets, and we're gonna narrow it down even further. This is not to say that these things are not priorities, or that we don't have other priorities, but we're just, we're really drilling down into what is growth as something that we can all agree on, so. Go ahead.
Don't even spread it around, just put it all in one spot.
But they also do a good job with policy.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea?
Yeah. It's after, yeah.
Usually on the ball.
Well, I was like, I'm like the night. Well, he was on the YP.
But, but also.
Got a what?
Get your Medicare.
Oh, yeah. Is that always what yours is?
I took care of that today.
Right, like it's a muscle number.
Usually on the ball.
Well.
Well, he was on the Y P N.
But, but also.
Got a what?
Get your Medicare.
Oh, yeah. Is that always what yours is?
I took care of that today.
Right, like, it's a mobile number.
I know. Two one eight two.
Yeah, what is the sound that I was like? I, I literally answer very few calls that don't show up as a name in my phone that's not already.
Two one eight two five. Because it could be a consistent.
That, I know, so, right. Is that they do a lot of voice, so I don't know if it's. On Google.
Maybe there's, maybe there's some.
Less than the first round.
But also, if it's five, that basically just didn't get enough sales, you know, to justify kind of being. That's kind of like, shop local becomes not happening for.
It's a Blue Cross.
Because, because. You know, and if it's like, you know. Obviously, it was kind of different, but I mean, it's like. Do we try to find out, like, what products do we actually have?
Well, they have a chiropractor.
Oh, right. We are done with round two. This is gonna be our final round, so good work, everybody. You were actually very decisive. So we were left with, our top category was increase in taxes collected. We had fifty-one votes for that. Increase in the number of businesses was actually only twenty-two. And then increase in the number of employees was nineteen. So, interesting. You never know what you're gonna get with these things. So those are some of the, the metrics of growth that I think we're all recognizing are something that we can, can keep looking at and hopefully, yeah, researching. Go ahead.
Well, I looked at the four that were up there, and subtracting the increase in the taxes, wouldn't the other three, if they were successful, automatically raise the increase on the taxes? That's just my opinion on the matter. That's the reason why I didn't put anything into that, because it just seems like the other three that would automatically start raising the taxes, so why put the effort towards that? Put the effort towards the other areas, and the taxes would naturally just grow on their own.
That's a good way to think about it. Any comments on that?
I think I'd probably second Brent's conversation there, in that if we come out and say we are in favor of and we are supporting growing the number of employees and growing the number of businesses, people will harrumph and say, that's great, that sounds good, but if we say we're looking to increase taxes, it's not gonna get understood well. It's not gonna sell well. And even though I understand it now, having had this conversation, that that's a good way to measure the metrics, if that's the goal, that's a good way to measure it, but people aren't gonna get it in a headline. So we'll have to do a lot of work to explain that clearly, or it's gonna be a problem.
Well, I think just to expand on that, I think lead measure could be the, for your leg measure. So the outcome of what you're gonna put your effort towards could be the sales tax. So if you're doing the right lead, the leg should follow, right? I mean, if you're doing what you need to do on the other three, the sales tax.
Yep, that's what I would figure. Is the metric of the other metrics.
And maybe a better way to say that is to increase our tax base versus increasing taxes or tax.
That would be a better way of saying.
Yeah. Expand, you know.
Nice.
Enhance.
Expand in bacon. Simpsons, Simpsons.
Let's all vote on that as a word?
Nope.
Okay. Interesting. So. Any final comments, questions about the activity that we just did? All right. So we are winding down and getting into our next steps. So we have identified some metrics that I think we can all agree can help us visualize what growth is, and we can work that into an economic development policy. So some of our next steps are gonna help us just get a little bit more information, both from the community and from business owners in the community, or people who are thinking of becoming business owners potentially. And we have a lot of different partners that we can work with to make this happen. So I think we need to start planning some, some outreach, maybe doing some surveys of current business owners, maybe business owners who were looking at the area and ended up elsewhere, because I'm pretty sure we have an organization who would have those contacts. West Central Initiative also might have some, some numbers that we could work, work, work with together. So essentially, I think we need to do some, some community outreach that also says, community members, what do you think of when you're thinking of economic development? And what is gonna make you feel excited about economic development in Fergus Falls? So that can be followed up with some internal study of what the incentives and investments are, the, the tools that the city can use that can help us to reach our grows of, our goals of growth, and then also help us to explain better to the community what our metrics are for reaching those goals. Then we can move into the creation of the plan, which is gonna be through the city council, because it'll be a city policy. We'll kick it back, probably back and forth with the port and with Greater Fergus Falls. I think we should also let business development for Fergus Falls at least see a draft of it at some point. Planning Commission possibly. So I think it's gonna take us a little time to really work through it and finesse it, but that would be hopefully a goal for, I don't know, twenty. Do you think we can get this done by the end of the year? No. No, that's too, that's too soon. Okay, we'll keep working on it. But then, I think an important part of getting through the, the actual creation of the policy is determining ways that we can do follow-up on it, and I think we need to do follow-up yearly. And something that we found online that I thought was really cool, and like, the city of Red Wing does this, is a yearly economic development report card, where they, they lay out exactly what their metrics are, and they, they go through and they list, like, how they reached those metrics, or if they fell short, or what. They have, they actually have, like, a really comprehensive report card that they do. And I think the city of Fergus Falls should do something similar, and be able to present that and say, this is, this is what our goals are, and if we're seeing that the metrics aren't matching with our goals, that's probably a time for us to consider again what our economic development policy is. So.
I got a question, if I could, and, and this is going through my head, so I'm gonna ask it. And maybe we're already doing this, but, Sophie, I apologize. But I'm just envisioning, I mean, obviously having this good plan in place. I'm just wondering, how do we, you know, take care of the assets we have as far as the businesses? To Anthony's point, too, like, I'm looking at, say, I own a business in town, right? And I'm doing good today, and we do all this economic development, and we look for future businesses and such. But we have some businesses that maybe are suffering today that need assistance, and they close their doors. Well, if we bring one in and one goes out, we're in this never-ending cycle. And so in part of the economic development, do we have, or is there currently a plan in place to make sure that, you know, we have what we need to support the current business, so we're not having an open and closed door? Does that make sense?
Yeah, because that, that is almost one of the comments, that when we start talking about incentives to get people to come to town, you know, the businesses that are in town that are struggling for employees, you know, equally as hard as anybody else, that, you know, we're gonna give somebody money to come to town to either raise the wage or take on employee. Yeah, so, you know, there's a trade-off, and, and it also needs to be finessed as to how we deliver that message, too.
And obviously, everywhere, any population that's growing, I mean, probably deals with this. I'm just wondering how the message behind it and what we have to support the current business to not, yeah, just was going through my mind, like, how do we make sure we can grow the right way, but also still support what's here, so we're, we're not gaining to lose? Then we're always playing tug-of-war, I feel, or we couldn't.
No, I get what you're saying.
I just don't know how that works.
Good point.
Into that.
I think that's a conversation that will also play into the comprehensive plan, because we do, I mean, it'll, it takes an overall understanding of what you want happening in the community to be able to say, this is what we're incentivizing over something else. So while we have, like, the metrics and things that we're trying to reach with our economic development policy, what we also need is for city council members to say, okay, constituents, what are your priorities for Fergus Falls? Is it supporting the businesses that are already here? And in that case, we have this economic development, development policy that's in place, and we can, like, help connect people with the resources that we have? Or is it to be bringing in new businesses, and that's your higher priority? Is that, Karen, do you have any further thoughts on that? I feel like we, our brains are on a wavelength.
I bet it's gonna be both.
Yeah.
Right, because everyone's gonna want you to take care of the businesses that are here, and everyone's gonna want you to bring new business in as well. Is that a fair statement?
Right.
You know, I think if you have the proper, about the strategy, recognize existing businesses, existing markets, existing manufacturing, businesses that benefit from, businesses that. Think if you have that plan, then you have a target, a close to, you know, development, plus things in a natural form. Invest in the businesses that strengthen you, existing modeling. I think having that kind of development, and having the data, you know, knowing what are the industries, what are the industries that support those industries, where the service industries, what's being exported, what's, where are there opportunities for import? If you have that data, the judges, you know, I think that will, that should drive our plan. So that we're not just aimlessly going out and giving a subsidy, this business is, but it's part of a larger plan. And recognize where we have strengths, where I'm, where I'm.
Yeah, the, the plan's gonna help us determine this is a greater risk than this incentive, and so we should prioritize this over that. So it's not good talking, but.
Sorry, I had a hand up first, but I just have to, as the chair of Greater Fergus Falls Board, I, I think we need to be clear, where does Greater Fergus Falls fit into the plan, right? So we keep talking economic development, but it's my understanding that that's why Greater Fergus Falls was created?
Economic development policy.
Right.
So like a.
Right, right.
Specific thing.
But what's the relationship between the city and Greater Fergus Falls? So maybe that's what you were gonna ask.
Well, I, I was just gonna clarify, I guess, to Justin's point. Currently, based on very early, when we were first created, a survey of businesses and general economic development frameworks, our, our goals align with exactly what you're saying. So, I mean, our strategies include business retention and expansion first and foremost, and then it's startups and technical assistance to make sure that those existing businesses do have the resources that they need, whether that's workforce training, you know, all of, all of those types of things that will help them hopefully keep their doors open and grow. But through this next leg of outreach that we're doing, I'm hopeful that we can then find new data, you know what I mean, because that was three years ago, right? So.
Things are very different.
And we learned a lot from, during COVID, we learned a lot of where so many really great existing businesses maybe are not as well-trained at, right, like cash flow, those types of things. So we, we recreated a lot of the, the training that we had intended on doing to meet those needs, to help them stay open, obviously. But with that, I, I think maybe it's, obviously, the economic development piece is just one component of that comprehensive plan, right? So I think that we definitely will take, you know, what, what West Central is doing with their sets plan, the, the outcome of, of this survey that we're going to be doing, however, however that takes shape, and then we take a look at what we've been doing, and then obviously, what are just the city's economic development priorities will be, and then we kind of reevaluate what kind of services and programming that Greater Fergus Falls can provide.
All makes sense. I just, I was just sitting here thinking, like, okay, what's, you know, to your point about messaging about sales tax, I'm thinking, what kind of messaging, when we get to that point, I know it's early stages, but making sure that the message isn't to the businesses that are here that, hey, they're just gonna turn and they're gonna try to really drive this, and forget about us, so.
And from a business owner standpoint, just with my growth, I didn't realize that there was resources, like grants and things like that, for workforce training, you know, help from the state for just getting things up and running, and I think a lot of it comes down to education. And letting businesses that exist here know that there's resources out there, like Fergus Falls, or, you know, they can turn to the city, and the city can move them into whatever little bucket they need to go into, and then they get their help. Not that they're just like, oh, bye, like, we're gonna just only focus on new growth. Because obviously, they go in and out, so.
And I just, if Carrie Brimhall were in the room, so I'm gonna just bring her voice into the room. She keeps advocating for bringing the team of Derek, I always get his name wrong, LaPointe, and Dan Malley from Moorhead, how did they bring a community, the community members, not just the city, together to rally behind a project? So she said, I think that Fergus Falls could use kind of their input and how we could do something before we present it to the whole community, to make the community feel like they, like, to get a point with the survey, and that they've been a part of that. So they'd love to come and talk to all of us, and Carrie's already been talking with them.
Oh, cool, okay, great.
Yeah, we should get them on the agenda at a future session.
Well, thanks for the update for me. Sounds good.
Clara?
Yes.
Going back to one thing, Ben, you were saying about, I think you used the word targeting, right? So that we're, we know where we're targeting our resources or whatnot. I think that will help, between the city and Greater Fergus Falls, it'll help us if we know where those targets should be, because we can't, like, let's say, tax increment, obviously, we can't give it to everyone that would ever ask. We'd have to, and kind of the goal of all this is, where are those targets? So we know, and we're working together, okay, where can we, what buckets should we be?
Right.
So before we even come to the port or the city council with a project, we've already known, you know what? This fits in the policy, this is a match, you know what, this one really isn't a match, but that's where then, but maybe this process or this, you know.
Right, and I think at our last meeting, staff in every entity need a roadmap, you know? You've just been having to fly by the seat of your pants, but if you have a roadmap, it makes it a lot easier.
We've been reactive rather than proactive, and this, in my mind, is a way for us to be proactive and say, okay, these are, this is what we're trying to do, and these are the steps that we can take to get there.
And I think it's important that we look at kind of where we're at, too, and what power community is really strong. I know it's, we're really quick to go, oh, well, Alec has this, or, you know, Battle Lake has the restaurants, but, you know, we have to take a lot of pride in kind of who we are and what we have. And I always see us as a very service-oriented community. We have the CBHH, you know, we have human resources, we've got a service of Otter Tail Power, you know, we've got the Level Four E V D, we've got North Star Behavioral Health out there. We just, we've done that well. We have the history of the Kirkbride, you know, I think that's, for me, kind of a way that we can leverage some strength, too, like, that's something we're good at, that we've done for a long time, and has drawn people to our community. So maybe we're not, you know, maybe we don't have a hundred amazing restaurants, but, you know, when people have service needs, our community is, is in high service to a lot of people.
Lake Region Healthcare.
Thank you, an obvious miss by me.
I know you meant it.
I put it in my survey.
I just get, I get a spiff every time I say it, so.
Are you kind of building on that? I think that's one of the things that we, we probably do also need to do, is identify, like, as you say, you know, Alex has X, you know, Battle Lake's strength is Y, but I don't think we have necessarily identified what we want to be as a community. And I think if you identify what you want to be, then you can also build, build on that, because then you've got somewhere to go. And I think sometimes we pull in multiple directions, partly because you, you, we do sit between kind of Fargo, kind of Alex, you know, and, and sort of Battle Lake and Otter Tail Lake. And, and I think we, we try to be things sometimes that we aren't necessarily, and maybe we have to identify who we wanna be, and then make that our strength and our core, and build off that. And, and as you say, maybe the, the service industry is where our, where our strength lies, and not look to be, we're not going to be a lake community, because we don't have a lake outside of Lake Alice, and you can't get many boats on that, so.
We got Berro.
And, and we're not gonna get Azovas on Lake Alice, so. So, you know, so I think that's where. So, you know, so I think that's where I I feel sometimes we just, we we meander on this path of like trying to be, you know, I mean, the number of times people will say, well, you know, Wapperton has all these factories. Well, you know, we don't, do we want to be a Wapperton? Or do we want to be at Alex? Or do we want to be at Battle Lake? I think we have to say, we want to be Fergus, and this is kind of who we are.
And I think that's why it's exciting to have kind of more.
Yeah.
You know, that's the group together, because if there is kind of that shared vision and shared messaging, I think that's probably what those folks talk about, is just kind of getting excited about that. Who you are as a community.
Yep.
I'll share a comment I heard this weekend. We've had some people visiting from out of state, and this one person had never been in Fergus Falls before. And they were in town on Friday shopping. They are thinking about relocating from the state they are in. And they were thinking of, you know, would they go down south? And they said, wow, was I impressed with Fergus Falls. I loved being there. They were so impressed. And they would consider, I mean, this was their first time, first time being downtown was last Saturday. And they were so impressed with Fergus Falls. So hearing what you're all saying about who we are, yeah. Other people do see it when they've never been here before, and they were really struck by how great it really is, so.
I think it actually helps closing the car park. It forces more cars downtown. It looks busier.
But that's true. It's true. To your point, Anthony, I think that kind of gives me, I mean, it's exciting. Because if you live in a community, if you ask the residents, like, what's this community about? You know, you look at Alec or Battle Lake or Detroit Lakes. I think a lot of those residents probably could resonate with what what that community stands for. Not, I mean, just like what you're saying, I think. And I don't know if you ask it, if you sold into the population in Fergus, what would they say? Be interesting to know that and define our our win. But I think if you can mark the goal down, you're like eighty five percent more likely to reach that goal. And so if we could as a community define that through this, and then put our resources to it, I think that would. We don't need to be Alec, right? Somebody said, we need to define what Fergus Falls is, and I think that's very true.
Yeah. I think we're always, we're always seems like we we're always a wannabe community. Yeah, we want to be, we want to be somebody else.
Yep.
Uh as opposed to identifying ourselves as to who who we are.
Chris Shulkey would say, we're the coming city of the Northwest. He's said that so many times, you know, that was the way the town was referred to many times. I'd like to back up on one I one idea that I'd so he's get on the table. The people that do economic development have in their box of things to work with incentives. And so they're thinking about how to incentive and how to make attractive this thing or this place or whatever, because that's what they have to work with. And yet I don't know that we need to just assume that any effort to attract business is going to require an incentive. I think that we could sell our city lots of ways without necessarily having to hand out cash or hand out advantages that can be a little troublesome when you're dealing, especially with retail, where you bring some advantage to a company that kind of takes away from another existing place. So I wouldn't say that we want to always first go to what our incentives are to hand out. There's certainly examples out there, you were talking about Red Wing, for example, that had a a very clear comprehensive plan and metrics to measure it and all that. Whether Red Wing is a good example or not, I don't know. But there's certainly some example of a town out there that they just grow. They're not handing money out to anybody. They're not making promises to anybody. But they are at a critical mass where growth is happening, whether they want it or not. You know, you drive through West Fargo, and the place is just blooming. And as far as I know, they're not necessarily handing out money left and right for every house that goes up out there. And so there's something about those kinds of places where they just grow because there's something about them. Well, that comes around to what, you know, their definition is, who are we? And what is it that's going to make people say, I want to be there? I don't care what the incentive is. That's where I want to be. So I'd like to emphasize that, bring some real strength to that side of the story. And whether it's the methods, as Ben was talking about, whatever methods we're using among them, certainly there'll be a place for incentives. But I don't, I don't want to lead with that every time if we can help it. There'll there'll be a place for it. But I think that we've got a lot to sell, and it's been evidenced in Bill's comments and others as well, that, you know, the people that live here and that have lived here for a long time love it here, and there's a good reason why.
You know, back in the day, we were we were known as old people, geese and police.
Geasers, geasers, geese.
It's not that much. I I just, I just want to emphasize that that we just had a new twin home built right behind us. Both of those homes were purchased by people that do not live in Fergus Falls. They're moving into Fergus Falls, and they're of the older generation. But we have a drawing for those type of people. So what do we need to draw more of those? What type of businesses do we need for those people? Because they're coming.
I had a realtor, um when she read an article, she sent me an email here about two years ago, when they said Fergus is dying and nobody wants to come here. And she said, that's quite the contrary. She says, I got people, and most of the ones that want to come here, that she's getting calls from, are from Fargo. They want to get out of that. And I mean, you're talking about how Fargo is expanding. I hear a lot of people saying, yeah, we want Fergus to grow, but we don't want it to grow that fast. They like small town living. And then you take a look at Fargo, you may say that they're not giving people money. Well, yeah, their property taxes are going through the roof. Watch the news every year. I mean, their property taxes in some cases are double what we're paying here. You know, and people like the small town living, and they want the businesses they come, and they want to expand, but they don't, they like the small town living, and they don't want us to expand that quickly. You know, so she was telling me that most of the people that they were getting phone calls from were Fargo. They wanted out of Fargo. Fergus was just far enough out. It's a nice town. It had everything they were looking for. And uh but it was close enough to the cities where they could go and get what they wanted, but they didn't want to have to be living in those types of cities.
Good momentum happening.
Well, that was kind of a heartwarming end. I don't have anything else, I don't think.
So where should we go from here?
Outreach. I can go over this again.
No, that's okay. I I mean, just kind of like get some next steps sort of on the calendar, you know, so we keep momentum going. Do we, what kind of community outreach do we want to do? Or do we have some data that we can use or?
Well, like Nataya said, there's there's data that exists from Greater Fergus Falls. It might be a little dated, but we can update that. Um I'm really loving Justin's idea of asking people, like, what is our community about? I feel like that's another thing we can do. Um I think we should do outreach to all of our current businesses and just see how things are going post pandemic, because things are so much different now than they have been. And probably ask questions directly related to the pandemic and their recovery. Yeah, I don't have a timeline laid out, but this is just, this is work that needs to happen before we can fully develop our policy.
So there's a budget for the comp plan. Is there an ETA, a timeline? When does the work begin?
It's budgeted for 2022. So when we go into fiscal year 2022, um we've already met with one firm just to see what's out there and get information. So that'll be the next step, is we need to start meeting with with different firms and see what's the right fit.
So before that, the economic development policy, I mean, is it possible to have draft or a working policy in place that can then be adopted into the comp plan?
Yeah, this would happen separately from the comp plan. I mean, they'd all tie in together, but this would happen. I mean, we're starting this now. That's why we're.
And we'll keep marching forward with it from today, right?
I mean, would it be realistic to like try and get back together quarterly? Or is that too far out? Just so we can keep it like, is that before meetings next year? Is that too? So I I don't know what, how long it takes to get through that loop, I guess I don't know. But quarterly seems like at least we put on our calendar.
It is meandering. Another strength.
I don't believe in straight lines.
I would say probably at least quarterly, you know, because I mean, this is a high priority issue, so.
I'm good with quarterly, if that's what you want.
Do we want to try to meet again before the end of the year?
Is it a new quarter before the end of the year, early in the last quarter?
From the last.
The last quarter.
So maybe January, when it's cold and dark.
Early in January?
And again, you said, I mean, this process is one that'll run separately, but alongside of the development of the comp plan. So we'll have other meetings that'll deal more specifically with the details of a comprehensive plan. Just keeping in mind, this is flowing along with it, as if I understand it, how you put it, right?
So we need to know what the action items that need to be addressed prior to the next meeting in January?
Sure, I can do that. You want that to everybody or just you?
I don't know. I maybe we can just talk about it.
Okay.
It's like you said, a lot of the community needs and whatnot, Greater Fergus Falls and West Central Initiative, so much of that is probably already done. It's just.
Well, business, business needs, not, I mean, we don't serve the community.
No, yeah, no, I misspoke there. Yeah, we should get some community input opportunity to melt there before the next time you move to listening sessions.
I think it would also be good to invite the chamber to the next meeting in fairness, because it it's so they kind of involved in businesses, and we've somewhat excluded them.
We haven't talked about them at all. I was wondering.
So maybe three, four months ago, when we had a shift in leadership at Greater Fergus Falls, we were talking about getting these four entities together with a third party just to navigate. I I mean, I think we're navigating things really well. But is there still interest in that? Because I think Nataya sent out a.
I sent out a doodle bowl, but I've only had two responses. Sorry, guys.
And we've kind of narrowed it down to like two people, because we pitched some names to the city. The city came back and said, well, how about Dan Momstrom? How about um Carlo and Malcolm? And Dan has declined because he works so closely with the chamber. But if we do decide to go with somebody, he would love to give them his input and what he learned from the chamber.
So I guess I didn't realize the chamber was part of that all along, so.
They weren't initially that, I think, happened after the test?
Right.
So if we included the chambers, we were discussing with Dan, then. Would he be in or out?
He'd be out.
Because he's with the chamber.
And I think he would be out no matter what, because he said he feels like he would be a little biased.
Right.
Toward what you learned through the focus groups with the chamber.
Fair enough.
But maybe we want to put that on hold. Maybe maybe we're rocking and rolling here, so.
I'll refer to Andrew on that one, I don't know.
Let's talk offline, just because we're down to five minutes.
Yeah.
I quite honestly think those are, this conversation and that conversation are two different things.
Okay.
Not even on the same planet, so.
Okay.
I I don't think right now is the appropriate time to have that in-depth discussion. We'll talk offline.
Anything further? Thank you, guys, for bringing your brains. I think this was.
Thank you.
Start, and I'm excited to see where we go.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.